I don't know, I think it's...
Please give everyone a chance to speak their minds.
So anyways, I was very impressed with that. I think it was a great opportunity for our township, over a billion dollars. I mean, we've never seen anything like that in our community. And what that, another thing that could possibly do is help us to be able to run water down those sidewalks. That's something we dreamed about meeting, but to provide water for our community. And then sewer, oh my gosh, I look, I look really like that because that would be behind my property as well. So, I mean, alright, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm James Marks, I live right around the corner, I'm sorry, Gooding Road. I'm James Marks, I live right around the corner, 615 Gooding Road, Mylan Oakville. Where's all that traffic gonna go? It's already a truck route. The roads run home to trucks. It's shit road now. We don't got no water out there. What's this company gonna do with all that water? I've lived there for forty-seven years. No water out there. They stopped it when they did that other bullshit. This is, this is gonna bring a lot of problems in that area. It's right in my backyard. They don't care about it, they're gonna go right around mine. I'm gonna look at a building in my backyard, what about my family? What they gonna look at, wall? Nine hundred trucks, they already take water in that road. People get killed on that corner, all the time. It's the worst corner. County gonna come out and fix none of that? They're gonna fix these roads that have these trucks? And all that? Water coming in? What about signal, what about the weather? They can fix that. I lived there, I hunted that property, trust me. I had permission, when it's EQ, it still is EQ. They, they don't do none of that. But you go in there and see that road where there's a nine-hundred-foot hole on Mylan Oakville? Used to fish in that hole. What are they doing with that? Nothing's going on that side of the road, come to that hole. The water's horrible. This, this, this is bad, this is ugly. I don't care for it, I don't support it at all.
Hello, my name is Dustin Zach. I'm fairly, I'm sorry, my first name's Dustin, my last name's Zach.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zach.
I'm fairly new to the community, moved here in December. Moved to really get away from development. But just looking at this, you know, I have a couple of questions I think you guys should consider and resolve, which I don't think you can do tonight. The first one is, there's like a lot of talk at the beginning about how a good portion of this is, you know, general industrial use. And, and the biggest question to me is, why isn't the facility on that general industrial use? It requires no rezoning, requires nothing. Here's to me, that's primarily on what they want to rezone, which is the agricultural use. And the question's why? Why, why would they do that? And it's my understanding that there's a conditional, or you guys are considering a conditional rezoning based only on two things, and that's, one, that it's a data center, and two, that they purchase it. And nothing more. That, that sounds a little bit odd to me that they would place, you know, they bring in this nice map, there's, you know, obviously there's some planning into it, but it's dropped on a place that requires rezoning, and the only conditions are that there has to be a data center. There's no conditions on the water, the noise, everything everyone's talking about tonight. There's also, you know, a lot of promises made about what will be touched, what won't be touched. Why are we zoning the areas that aren't gonna be touched? It seems odd, you know? It, it seems, it seems odd that they would place it almost wholly, you know, predominantly on the agricultural, agricultural portion, with the only limitation that it's gotta be a data center. And then make promises that a bunch of areas aren't gonna be in touch. But also require that those are gonna be changed to this general, uh, conditional, general industrial.
So, my questions are...
Could you guys hear me, sir?
My name is David Alexander. My question, will they be receiving tax incentives from our township? Or will they be a benefit to us? That's one question. Will they be paving any roads to be a potential positive for our community? Our corner road? And will, will wa, city water, which someone already else had mentioned? Will city water be available as it comes down Hitchingham Road? Like the one lady who said, that could be a big benefit for many of us. Will, will we be getting city water? Or be, be able to branch off of, as it comes down Hitchingham Road? Will it disperse down the roads to supply some of the community to live up to? So, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
I live in Kandor, I live on Mylan Oakville. Right across the street is where we live in Hallowell. My husband has leukemia, it's not curable, unless he has a transplant. That transplant's due next week. He will be in the hospital four to six weeks. And for right here, he has to stay at home, away from home. The only thing he could do is go outside because of the injury he had. There, we'll be across the street, we ask the vet if the doctor's today. They said, no, you can't leave the house. He will be indoors without the door shut, anytime any buildings across the street, or neighbors too. And what do we do with him for a year? And it's not something we expect, we didn't expect him to be, and now we got him keeping the house for a year. I'm just totally against that, and I just wanna let him go.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Harris. I live on Gooding Road.
Judy?
Harris.
Harris, right.
I live on the corner of Mylan Oakville and Gooding Road. And if I heard you correctly, you said nothing would be impacted on the west side of Gooding Road? However, their map clearly shows the substation is going to be on the west side. Matter of fact, just a couple of acres down from my property. So, I'm kinda confused that, what's, did I hear you right?
The question is...
You said there would, that the west side of Gooding Road would not be impacted.
Prefer a whole question, but that one's something that I can answer. What I said was, what we're hearing, that it's discussed rezoning between Mylan Oakville...
Right, but it's contingent on this property.
The entire site does go across to the other side of Gooding Road.
Okay, because what I heard you say...
I said we're talking about rezoning in this section, the entire site covers that area.
So a substation is a power station, yes?
Yeah, it's a lunch show there.
And they generate quite a bit of noise. Right now, all summer, I hear gunfire from early mornings. And now I'm going to have to listen to a substation purring, or rattling, or whatever. If they're anything like the ones that I'm familiar with, they're not quiet. So, it's just, I'm not happy about it. And I just had to say something, thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Deborah Owen.
I'm sorry, it's just really hard to...
I know, I'm really confused. And so, Deborah Owen, and I'll make sure I sign you before I go.
Thank you.
Um, I've been a resident for twenty-five years. My husband lived here, he was one of your life, he was a spouse when we were married, everybody's been children here. I am a born and bred City Girl, I'm even a daughter of her. I live on the road, I have well water, I have septic, I have flooded roads you can barely drive down. And in winter, they ice up so bad, I have to go through the whole way down. I love every minute of it. Also, we built a fire station, the water that is recurrent counterpoint was to be moved there. We've spent, I don't know how long, trying to get it moved there to make it accessible for those who do need to haul water into their homes. That never happened, and that was supposed to happen, that was part of the original plan. So my concern is, if we couldn't make that happen, this situation with this water, how do we... And I don't want it, I have someone bring me water, I have a team, I'm perfectly wired. But for those that do want it, how do we know for sure this is truly gonna happen? And to me, accessible city water, which we still haven't found yet, how much money is this gonna cost? And how is it gonna affect our community? And I would just encourage you to, as much as you've heard your residents that you represent, rather than making a rash decision, you need, you need to take a moment, take breath, and listen to what the residents say, if they're relying on you for their well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, have you spoken already?
I look like I have, but I know I haven't spent three minutes. I really have a question for the board.
I'm gonna ask you to step aside, yeah, I have a question. Why don't you go through?
Hey, I'm getting my second guess.
Hi, uh, my name is Michael Breitberger. I live on Hitchingham Road, directly across from those properties wanting to be developed or rezoned. I wanna say that, one is, we've been here, my family and I have been here a little over two years. We moved there purposely to be in an agricultural rural development area, kind of lived in a city environment. That's what we moved here for, and that's been the historical usage of this area, and we really love that. So, one is, our concern is, with any type of a development, whether it be a subdivision, residential, or anything, what we moved out there for, and we wanna make sure that whatever happens is, it stays there. Obviously, the submacks and keeping the natural thing, that's, that all sounds great. My concern is that when it comes to the site review part, and we start looking at the actual nitty-gritty of how detailed that, how much involvement are we gonna have? Is the direct residents who are living there gonna be directly impacted with that? Can we have more direct say in that? Can we be on that type of panel saying, yes, no, hey, what about this idea, have you thought about this? Because I know that at this point, we're really at that general review stage, you know, when I had the nitty-gritty of that. Because that's what's gonna impact every single one of us who live all around this environmental development. While I certainly, you know, understand we have our elected officials and our commission for general development, we're the ones that are gonna be, at our doorstep, we're the ones that are gonna be dealing with that. And I'd ask that we have a lot of say in how that happens. Obviously, the environmental concern, the noise concern, all of those things, everyone's, I quote, I certainly have those concerns. And then obviously, with the water development and sewer development potentially, sounds great. Our water source, I have a well full of sulfur, yeah, so I have to pay a lot for treatment. So, yeah, it would be, it could be a benefit to have that. But where is that gonna be ran? Is that gonna be accessible to everybody else, everyone around this area? Not just a direct line to this property and that sort of type of thing? So, those are a couple of my questions. And the biggest thing is making sure that we have a say as residents, adjacent to this property, and all the different, different things that matter.
Cheryl Holver. So, I just have a couple of quick things to say, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I've only lived here for ten years. For the other forty-eight years of my life, I lived in Ypsilanti. I don't want this here. I don't care how good they make it look, I don't wanna here. So my only question is, can we put together a petition to get this put on the ballot like we did with the low-income housing next to Lincoln School? That's my only question. I'm never gonna want this here, ever.
How many names would it take to shut it down, so we can get it fixed, you know?
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
My name's Lisa Cunningham. I live on Fuller Road with our property back up on Hitchingham Road. One thing I'm kinda puzzled about is, I noticed that the creeks are graying out on this mound. There, I've got sugar creek and dotty drain that run through my property. Around forty acres, I have sheep and goats. So at times when they're grazing through the forest, sometimes they grake out of the creeks. So I don't care, like if there's any pollution that's turned up in the building process and goes into the creek. Now, I'd like to see where exactly the creek, you know, because like, if you look here, here's one creek and then it kind of fades into nothing. You know, that one is on our property. You know, there's, there's drains, dotty drain comes in from another direction. I think there's a drain that comes in from Mylan. I, I would have liked to have seen the waterways on that. And it's probably, it's probably mainly a cat. Other people have voiced my other concerns, which are like pollution and noise, right? And how, from what I understand, the data centers have to be kept at a certain temperature year-round. And so, you have large fans on the tops of the buildings that are gonna cause a certain amount of sound. How loud is that? When it comes to running the water down Hitchingham Road, well, the water was run down Whittaker Road, and it came out, I don't know, three houses in our corner road from that direction. If it comes down Hitchingham, how will that benefit the people between Hitchingham and Whittaker? And what's the cost that we are going to have on the residential homeowners in hooking up? I mean, they'll run through the main water line, but, you know, what's the cost to us having to hook into it? You know? I'm wondering about that. But, um, yeah, I, I really think that those creeks and drains need to be done. Because, you know, once you've done construction and you're turning up a lot of dirt. You know, with the dump that close to the property, I'd like to be reassured that the soil doesn't have... That, you know, that predominantly the wind's blowing in from the west. And that goes inward dewy, so if, if they do churn up dust during construction, it's gonna fall on my property. So, um, I have to say, I, I am kinda happy to hear that they wanted to leave the tree belts in there. You know, I, I kinda imagine, you know, they're gonna go and clear cut. You know, I like trees, you know, I like breathing accidentally, you know? So, um, I still think, I, I would like to have seen how it's gonna affect the water, basically. You know, and it kind of went away, and that should have made a dollar for us to be able to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
Hi, my name is Jesse Carpenter. I am not directly affected by this, I'm not as close to it as some of you are. The problem with this project, it's coming in on the heels of the solar development. I sat through, I have no idea how many meetings, spoke, a lot of them. The problem that I see with this is, if you look at that, there's five big buildings there, full of electronics, cooling towers, everything else that goes along with this. One of the biggest things with solar is our fire department is not equipped to handle even some sort of fire in the solar field and the electronics of that. Now we're looking at allowing, I don't know what the square footage on these buildings are, but have we talked to the chief and asked him if he thinks our volunteer fire department can handle, if something goes wrong here? And then, we're already dealing with all the construction traffic with solar and everything there. And then we're gonna come in with another project like this, that is it beneficial for our township? Where we all kind of moved here to a rural area, and now we're going to allow them another five hundred and some acres of industrial. We obviously set this lane aside for industrial because it's been so destroyed in the past. And that small area has been set aside, but are we equipped to take care of the problem if something arises there? That would be my biggest concern.
My name is Keith Penner, and I live at the corner of Gooding and Mylan Oakville Road. And I just wanna make one comment and ask one question. First of all, if they're bringing water down Hitchingham Road, those of us who live on Mylan Oakville and are the closest to this will not have access to it. And that's one thing.
Yeah.
And my question is, the average lifespan of data centers is about ten to fifteen years. And so what's going to happen to the facility and the property after that ten to fifteen years?
Hi, I'm Whitey Toa Blair. Uh, and I live over on Whittaker Road, along with everything that everybody else has said. I don't see how we can benefit by this. But my main point is, put this on the ballot. Let us decide as a community, the way it was put on the ballot for the proposed zoning change that would have allowed the two hundred and two-plus units down the road here. Let the people decide, instead of fourteen people deciding, let all of us go, put it on the ballot.
Hi, my name is Tom Newhart, and I live on Whittaker Road.
Is your name again?
Tom Newhart.
Tom Newhart, I am Mr. Newhart.
And I just had a quick question, I know some of the people have mentioned, about wanting sewer and water. And I haven't taken forward what they have to call the water. It's not an easy task. But with the sewer, living on Whittaker runs right by my house, and they pump from the school. And it's under pressure, so I take hook onto it anyway. So, I'm just wondering, with the amount of water and sewage that they're going to send back to the other, is that gonna have to be pumped? I'm not an expert in that field at all. But I'm just wondering, you know, if they're gonna bring that out here, and a lot of people are saying, geez, I can hook up, can they really? You know, I think that's something, just with the amount that they're using, and then I'm thinking the water system too, with the amount that they're gonna use, are they gonna want a lot of taps coming out of it? I mean, is that just gonna be a gimmick to get people voting for this, and then not really able to utilize it like that? The other thing I wanted to mention was the fact about the longevity of this facility. I think, you know, technology changing every day, this thing may have a ten-year lifespan, five years, twenty-five? I don't know, but is there gonna be monies available, put away somewhere to clean that up so it doesn't turn out like a dump that we're gonna clean up? And I think we should look at that, some type of bond or insurance that says, this will be cleaned up at twenty-five years from now, priced at today's price. But twenty-five years from now, what's it take to clean that up? Just my comments, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Bob Oliver. Bob Oliver.
Uh, Mr. Oliver. Thank you, please.
I have forty acres of water road, and I connect it to a rock to go solar power. And I do not consider it a positive for our type of situation. The, I don't know much about data centers, I have a program on the bottom. I guess it's, it's gonna serve as something inside our community. But I don't know that, and I do intend to learn more about it. But I really don't, with this solar panel thing that we brought in, I do not see a positive for our community in any way, shape, or form. It's a big eyesore. If I live out in the country, I like the country living, I pay the bill of taxes to have that living. And to see it a little way of, of fitness, like beyond that, I guess I'll wait to see it, data center.
Thank you, Charles. Is there anyone else?
My name is Charles Smith, I live on Mylan Oakville. I have a whole list of things prepared I wanted to say, but today it's late, so I'm not so thoughtful. I just wanna share a message with you that happened in the past. One, Martin Marietta was moving in the area, and they happened to buy my best apartment property. A realtor came around and he said, well, we don't know what this is gonna be, but I guarantee it's not gonna be a smeg plant. Well, we don't know if it was a smeg plant at that time. So, right back then, we got Mr. Meen lied. We've been lied to a lot of times about that property, with people from all over, brilliant ideas about finding fence or like a roof for the township. Most of the buildings have been rebuilt, almost all the buildings have been rebuilt from that property. And it doesn't create as much tax revenue because there is no value there as what Martin Marietta just pulled in. So, we've said it all before, I was looking for a job. And what I wanna tell you now is, do not approve this thing. The country people like living out there, and they wanna see the farm like they're made.
Thank you, you were kinda starting to stand up, please. Mr. Dragan, we're gonna wanna give everybody a chance for us to ask.
My name is Philip Capra, I've lived on Mylan Oakville for twenty-five years. And I'm your neighbor, across the way, just about directly. And it becomes very clear, if you do a little bit of research, and if you look on YouTube, the big problem, the thing that people complain about the most about these data centers is the noise. I mean, that's noise goes on twenty-four hours a day, every day of the year, it never stops. Go on YouTube, see how many people have an issue with that. It becomes very clear, they, they don't really have it together in terms of noise abatement, they don't. None of these guys are going to live next to that, not a one of them, because the noise. That's the biggest issue. I've, I've lived out here twenty-five years, I like the countryside, I came out here, it's quiet and peaceful. And you're gonna, I'm gonna have to listen to this, all these fans and generators, gas fuel generators, and the, the, all these cooling fans, you know? Listen to this noise the rest of my life? I'm seventy years old, you know? None of you want to live in that circumstance. You need to get it together so you can do proper noise abatement. And if you do that right, I don't have that much objection to this. But it's obvious you can't, you don't have it together to do that yet. I just wanna make an issue of that, you need to be very careful about what noise this is really creating.
Sir, do you want to speak?
Hello, my name's Ryan Robbins. I live on Mylan Oakville. We built our house a few years back, just to be close to the family. Sounds like there's a lot of apprehension here with the noise. The gun range, the solar fields, kind of came in without a lot of precedence. It seemed like this...